Council is reconvened. We have one courtesy public hearing this evening. Speakers should begin their remarks by telling the council their names and cities of residence, and if they feel comfortable doing so, their home addresses. If you are here to answer questions only when your name is called, please come to the podium, state your name, and note that you are available for questions of council. Speakers will have three minutes, and there is no yielding of time. On the presentation monitor on the wall, you'll see your time counting down. Speakers must stay on the topic of the hearing and must direct their comments to the council members. Please refrain from profane or obscene speech. Direct your comments to council as a whole, and please refrain from individual or personal attacks. Councilwoman Ortega, will you please put Council Bill 424 on the floor?
Yes. I move that Council Bill 424 be placed upon final consideration and do pass.
It has been moved and seconded. The courtesy public hearing for Council Bill 424 is open. May we have the staff report?
Good evening. I'm Kathleen Leveque, Assistant Director of Parks Planning. Happy Haynes would like to be here tonight, but she has a graduation that she needs to attend. Tonight, we're presenting to you the Game Plan for a Healthy City, which is the long-term strategic plan to guide the Parks and Recreation Department. The Game Plan has been part of the Denverite Process, which is a suite of plans coordinated from departments across the city, including Community Planning and Development, Public Works, and Parks and Recreation. And the plan also aligns with the new Denver Comprehensive Plan elements. This is provides a highlight, an overview of our system. We have our mountain park system, which has over 14,000 acres, and then in our urban parks, we have over 6,000 acres. These include 10 regional parks, 45 community and special use parks, as well as 137 neighborhood and pocket parks. We also have rec centers, indoor and outdoor pools, over 80 miles of trails, and athletic complexes and golf courses. The Game Plan process began nearly three years ago, starting in summer 2016. This included robust engagement, many meetings, and public review drafts of the plan. We're very excited to present the final plan here tonight for your consideration. Throughout the process, at each stage of the plan, Parks and Recreation conducted outreach and engagement through meetings, surveys, workshops, events, and task force meetings. We received thousands of points of impact, of feedback, and at each stage of the plan and with each public draft, we were able to incorporate and dress and address most of the comments, concerns, and questions that we received. Our vision is a game plan for a healthy city. A healthy city includes healthy residents, and this means providing access and opportunities for healthy lifestyles, access to the parks that everyone is within a 10-minute walk to a park, providing something for all ages and abilities, and making sure that our programs and the places that we create connect with people of diverse backgrounds and interests. It also includes a resilient city, which means a city that's ready for climate change adaptation, enhancing biodiversity, particularly along our waterways and our forests, and making sure that we have strong stewardship of our resources. From this vision for a healthy city, the input that we received developed into four guiding principles. Those are every drop, every person, every dollar, and uniquely Denver. And these led into our implementation pillars. This is really our call to action, how we translate a strategic plan into actions that we can carry out to make a difference in the community. Every drop translates into adapting to our changing climate and limited resources. This means water conservation, making sure that our waterways and lakes are healthy, maintaining our tree canopy, and reducing our energy usage. Every person is about diversity with enhancing our programming to connect with different ages, cultures, and abilities, and improving outreach and community engagement. And it's also about growing in our system, including access to the parks and expanding the system. Every dollar is about reinvesting. This includes strategies that address equity, leveraging partnerships, and our funding and operations. And then uniquely Denver is about connecting with what makes Denver so special and unique. This includes enhancing our parkways, our tree-lined streets and trails, continuing to innovate across our system, and also providing access to nature, outdoor recreation, and arts and culture. From these specific strategies, actions and recommendations follow. An important thing to note about the Game Plan is that it ends with a three-year action plan that's very specific about what our department can do in the next three years. It also provides some metrics, and then that allows us that over time, we can evaluate our progress and then plan for the following three years after that, and so on. And finally, I'm available, and as well as some of my other colleagues from Parks and Recreation, if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have eight individuals signed up to speak this evening, so I'll call the first five up if you could come up to the front bench so that we can get through everyone in a timely manner here. The first five are Florence Navarro, Chairman Sekou, Jesse Paris, Joel Noble, and David Richter. If you want to come up to the front bench, that would be appreciated. And Florence Navarro, you're up first.
Let me begin by thanking you for the opportunity to speak in support of the Game Plan. My name is Florence Navarro, third-generation resident of North Denver. Attended Columbia and Skinner North Schools, North High School, graduated from the University of Northern Colorado, and have been a member of the Denver Parks Recreation Advisory Board for many years. As a resident of Denver, I went to the recreation centers to hang out with my friends and play foosball. I also remember going to Berkeley Park to watch the fireworks from Lakeside. All our friends were there, a meeting place, great memories. A place to hang out was a good thing, but more importantly, I played organized sports and learned the importance of team and healthy life activities. I still go to Ashland and Ossalon on a regular basis. My participation on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board was a way to ensure that our youth of today have the same opportunities to learn those life skills and be able to go in their to their neighborhood centers and parks as I did. That's why I'm excited about the future of Denver Parks, and I'm asking you to support the Game Plan for a Healthy City that is in front of you tonight. As a tenured member of Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, I had the opportunity to participate in the development of the first Game Plan and recently participated as one of the co-chairs of the task force, along with Daryl Watson, in the three-year process to develop this plan. In this process, we were thoughtful and deliberate in the discussion of the role our city parks and recreation system can have in the health of all Denver residents. Excuse me. We'll get to the second page here. Discussions to develop the vision and guiding principles were also deliberate and robust. Another key factor was equity was naturally integrated throughout the Game Plan. The voices of Denver residents helped share Game Plan, helped shared in the Game Plan. The process included extensive outreach and the collection of input and comments that ultimately led to the Game Plan as we know it today. The timing of having completed the Game Plan for a Healthy City and the implementation measure of 2A is incredible and something that could not have been orchestrated any better. The Game Plan is what supports and is the foundation for 2A. My fellow Park and Recreation Advisory Board members voted to support the Game Plan, as I encourage you to do the same this evening. Again, thank you very much for this opportunity to speak on behalf in support of the Game Plan.
Thank you. Next up, Chairman Sekou.
My name is Chairman Sekou, organizer, founder of the Black Star Action Movement, and successful candidate for mayor of the city county of Denver. Adolf Hitler made a statement that if you want a lie to be believable, make it big. Make it huge. And then organize the people around the lie because they're never going to look at who's going to implement it. So you say one thing over here, but in the deep background, you have people who are going to do something totally opposite. So let's talk about who is going to do this beautiful presentation and this wonderful vision. In this current election, I was arrested three times to defend my right to speak.
Keep your comments on the subject at hand, which is the Game Plan.
This is the subject because we're talking about the background. So I'd appreciate if you would allow me to speak without interrupting me.
I'll be happy to not interrupt you if you follow our rules.
Thank you very much, because we're going to form the decorum, which means that there's a decorum that you have to do too. Allow the people freedom of speech.
Do you have something to add on this issue?
I have more to say. If you'll stop talking. I talk, you listen. When you talk, I'll listen. That's called decorum. So who going to do this? When you want to defend the right of people to participate in this process equally with equity, who going to do this? You? Because you were silent on the issue of free and fair elections. You said nothing, and then you come here and I come here and you try to shut down the conversation. Where's the fear at? Where's the integrity at? Yeah. Hypocrisy. No democracy, hypocrisy. So as we do this thing, poor people have nothing to do with this because we are not organized, and our plight ain't nowhere on there because there's no process of building us up and lifting us up. So we say one thing.
I'm sorry, but your time is up. Next up, Jesse Paris.
Jesse Paris, representing for Denver Homeless Out Loud, Black Star Action Movement for Self-Defense, and Positive Action Commitment for Social Change. And I was on top of the ballot for our large, got almost 15,000 votes with no money. We are neither for or against this for the reasons that were already previously stated. Poor people are not on the table for any of this. You want to beautify the city for who? Who is this benefiting? The transplants that just moved in yesterday, or it's actual natives that helped build this city? You did a proclamation earlier for Public Works saying, oh, we commend you for building the city. We can't even afford to live in this city. So really, who is this benefiting? And you keep preaching this equality, equity madness, and it's not true. It's a lie. And like Sekou said, you keep telling a lie long enough, people start believing it. But it's clearly a lie. There's nothing inclusive about this plan, and this is why I spoke against this plan in the first place, because there's not nothing inclusive about the 2040 plan. And you rushed it through without giving people enough time to actually read through to what it actually is. So yeah, we're neither for or against this, but I want the voters to know that this is not benefiting poor people at all, especially when you have an urban camping ban that's criminalizing people just for surviving on the streets. You can't occupy any of these parks. So really, who is this benefiting? So in closing, we're neither for or against, but we ask you not vote yes on this because we will show you will show everybody who this truly is for, and it's not for poor people. In this whole campaign, we made everything about poor people. We put us at the forefront. When y'all turn the blind eye, you're going to continue to turn a blind eye because the city is not for poor people, it's for exclusively rich white folks. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Joel Noble.
Good evening, council. My name is Joel Noble. I live at 2705 Stout Street. Speaking on my own behalf, I'm here to speak in support of adoption of the Game Plan for a Healthy City as a supplement to the Comprehensive Plan. The plan for Parks and Recreation in front of you was developed along with the Comprehensive Plan Blueprint Denver and the new Denver Moves Plans as part of the umbrella of Denverite Plans. As with Blueprint Denver, this plan has specific strategies to achieve the goals of the plan with 25 priority strategies identified. And as with Blueprint Denver, the Game Plan includes a series of metrics, which also deeply incorporate the Comprehensive Plan's focus on equity, with all applicable metrics having an equity overlay to focus attention on equity during implementation. As with Blueprint Denver, this plan updates a plan from the early 2000s. That plan looked out about 20 years, and we're just about to the end of that horizon. This plan looks out the next 20 years. Most plans have one key goal, that if the public's heard about it, they could tell you, oh, I know that plan, that has the one key goal. And the one key goal from this plan that I expect the public is going to remember, even though there's so much more to the plan, is everyone, no matter where they live in the city, having access to a park with an easy 10-minute walk. That's a goal to be proud of. And the way the plan's written, that goal was informed by equity and implementation, and informed by the Blueprint Denver Growth Strategy to make wise decisions about investment in the park and make wise use of the money that the voters have recently voted on to increase our parks' capacity. I ask for your support in adopting Game Plan for a Healthy City.
Thank you. Next up is David Richter, and I'll invite Daryl Watson, Leslie Torogowski, and Andrew Sents to come up to the front bench.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, council. My name's David Richter. I reside in the Spear neighborhood. I'm Councilman Clark's rep on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. I just want to speak for a couple of minutes about my own personal observations and involvement with the development of Game Plan. I guess I'd say over the last several years at least, I've kind of observed the process. I've participated in it. I've gotten updates from both the department as well as the co-chairs, Daryl and Florence, who have or will speak. I think they've done a great job from the public sector to support and to steer to the best of their ability on the outside, and I really would like to thank them for their work on this project. Personally, I've participated in online surveys, community presentations, had direct correspondence with a number of members within the department. I've always felt like my issues have been listened to, addressed. I've given them lots of suggestions, and I see continually that they at least appear to accept that and to really create a healthy dialogue in terms of trying to assimilate comments from the public in addition to the myriad of other plans throughout the other Denverite programs to integrate all this together. I think the process in general has been very open, responsive, objective, inclusive, and I'm very much in favor of the current version of Game Plan, and I hope you will support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Daryl Watson.
Good evening, members of council. Council President Jolynn Clark. My name is Daryl Watson. I'm a 23-year resident of District 9. I'm honored to co-chair the Game Plan for a Healthy City with Florence Navarro. Thank you to Council President Clark and Councilwoman Debbie Ortega for your leadership within the task force. Thank you to each of the members of the task force that are here tonight and that have participated for almost three years on this process. I'd like to thank the Parks Recreation Employee Ambassadors. This was a unique process and included employees to and throughout the process. And then Manager Haynes and her leadership team, specifically Doty Erickson and Mark Tabor, who managed the process for almost these three years. We ask for your approval tonight for the 20-year Parks Recreation and Mountain Parks 2019 Game Plan for a Healthy City, based on the three criteria developed by Denver City Council to consider for adoption. They are: an inclusive community process was used and developed; the second, the plan is consistent with a vision, goals, and strategies of Comprehensive Plan 2040; and the third, the plan demonstrates a long-term view. First, equity was the capstone on which our almost three-year community process was built on. We received almost 6,000 unique user inputs into this process, hosting three public forums in 11 separate locations throughout the city. This plan, through the Denverite Process, was co-developed with Blueprint Denver. We coordinated our efforts, ensuring that we placed appropriate focus on how growth, as described within Blueprint Denver, could impact our four guiding principles: every drop, every person, every dollar, and uniquely Denver. The co-development allowed our planning process to remain consistent with a vision, elements within Comprehensive Plan 2040, while building on both Game Plan 2003 and Blueprint 2002. Finally, this plan has a 20-year planning horizon with a clear milestones review process called the three-year action plan. The Game Plan for a Healthy City has already inspired a community-driven and valid initiative to finally develop a dedicated funding source for our park system. As of this moment, DPR is acquiring land to build two new parks, with more to come. Thank you to Councilman President for City Council and many folks in this room for leading that charge. Manager Haynes rightfully states that parks are important pieces of our city infrastructure, and we believe that this plan would lead us to a process that would ensure that this occurs. In my closing, this may be my last public hearing that I speak to, that I address to council persons that are currently on council. Councilman Espinoza and Councilman Lopez, I wanted to thank you so much for your leadership throughout these years. I know that you've dedicated your life and your family's lives to this great work, so thank you for all that you do, and God bless you, and God bless the next stage of your journey.
Thank you. Next up, Leslie Torogowski.
Hi. My name is Leslie Torogowski. I've served as president of the Denver Parks and Recreation Advisory Board since 2013. We've been working hard on this game plan since November 2016, and first, I need to start by thanking you sincerely, Councilman Clark, because when we first started working on this project, we had a wish list of projects that had been identified through the bond process, and frankly, it was very depressing, because we knew that our game plan at that time didn't have anywhere near enough money to address our needs. So again, thank you, and Councilman Clark, for leading the charge on 2A, and thank you to all the Denver voters who agreed to create a dedicated funding source for our parks. Now we have a plan, a great plan, and we have the funding to make our plans a reality. I respectfully request that you pass this game plan without delay. I want to thank Daryl Watson, Florence Navarro, and others for spending countless hours working on this plan, including Denver Parks staff, specifically Doty Erickson, Laura Morales, Yoli Quesada, Mark Tabor, Kathy Leveque, and Director Happy Haynes for their strong commitment to the future of Denver City and mountain parks. Finally, again, I urge you to pass this wonderful plan so we can get to work without delay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, Andrew Sents.
Thanks. I don't have a lot to add. I think everybody said a lot of great things. I just wanted to be here to voice my support for this plan. I also wanted to say thank you for adopting the Blueprint Denver Plan a couple of weeks ago. I couldn't be here for that. I was a member of that task force, and I'm grateful that you were able to move that forward. So thank you for that. I just wanted to also speak to the fact that I do believe this was, all the plans, Blueprint and the Game Plan, were focused on equity first. That was my perception. I think the public process could not have been better, and I really want to commend the city staff for that. I think every time I had a chance to interact with them and to see the process that they set up, I could not have been more impressed, and I cannot imagine a better process. I think if I could maybe air a little grievance here briefly, it's been frustrating in this election cycle to see some candidates asking for you to delay this until after the election. It seems like that's a, I remember, I think, four years ago, I was here talking about a zoo thing or something like that, and Charlie Brown took particular issue at some of the folks who were asking for the same thing. So I think this is just sort of a rite of every four-year passage or something. I thank you for overcoming those appeals, and I thank you for your adoption of these plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you just state your name officially?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name's Andy Sents. I live at 1554 Forest Street in Park Hill.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right. That concludes our speakers this evening. Are there any questions from members of council? Councilman Espinoza.
I have a question for staff, I think. And I apologize, I was just trying to look, search, and this is related to a conversation I was having earlier today. What does the game plan talk about with respect to maintenance facilities in our open spaces
Just to clarify the question, is it about both maintenance facilities and open spaces?
Maintenance facilities located within open spaces, or well, within parks, I should say, dedicated parks.
Sure. Our game plan does acknowledge that we need to keep up on our maintenance facilities, and certainly, we are also looking at opportunities to expand maintenance facilities. For instance, in northeast Denver, we have one maintenance shop, and we have crews that have to drive tractors and other equipment on street for several miles, which is a safety concern. So we are looking at opportunities to create another maintenance shop where strategically needed, so that we can best serve the parks and the residents that benefit from them. And potentially, for instance, at 47th and Walden, which is a master plan that will be coming up soon, that is an opportunity where we're looking at the possibility of a maintenance shop in that, within that park space.
So is there any talk in the plan language about sort of efficiency of space, you know? And granted, 2A wasn't known at the time the planning effort was happening, that it would be successful. Where I'm going is that, you know, we could do acquisition with the 2A funds. At some point, does it, you know, is there anything in the plan language that sort of talks about looking at the facilities that are located on parks in open space? And, or dedicated parks, let's talk about that. And going, well, do we need all of this dedicated parkland to have these functions, storing trash, storing materials, storing large vehicles and fuel tanks? Or does it actually make sense to use 2A money to acquire sort of industrial, lower-cost industrial land to maybe offload some of those facilities? I mean, some of those, those space needs and reactivate existing parkland for park purp, you know? Granted, maintenance is park purpose, but, but actual amenity space as opposed to park, I mean, as opposed to storage and other things. So does it speak to, to that notion, or does parks in general, are they having this, this conversation strategically? Because some of our least, most expensive parkland would actually be something that we actually already own, just recapturing it and maybe turning, building a 2A facility that sort of both houses some function of maintenance and some new amenity. Sorry.
Sure. So the, the game plan doesn't speak specifically about any certain maintenance shops or maintenance yards to convert, but it does certainly talk about where we have undeveloped parkland or underutilized parkland that we already own to, to make it usable space. And also currently, whereas, you know, we have a, and a commitment that all residents should be within a 10-minute walk to a park. So for instance, if, if a DPR-owned property is a maintenance facility, that would not count as that 10-minute walk access. We want to make sure that residents have true access to a real park amenity that serves recreational purposes. Does that answer it?
Yeah, but I mean, this is something going forward, as you're starting to think about this and how we do acquisition and what sort of land is available, is that not all recreation facilities are open space. And so if you're looking at something that is, that is, is more of a hardscrabble space for a maintenance facility like that, is there, is there other recreation functions that we could co-locate in that that would create, you know, growing opportunities, health opportunities in those communities, sort of where we never would have expected?
Yeah, and I think as a department, we are definitely looking at opportunities, certainly where we already own land and we don't have to acquire it, that we could provide more there for residents to enjoy and use if possible.
So thank you. I just, literally, that was a conversation I was having earlier today with a constituent. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Espinoza. Councilwoman Ortega.
Thank you, Mr. President. Excuse me. I just wanted to ask, I'm not sure if Doty, you might be the right person, maybe Sky. If you can tell us how many people within... If you can tell us how many people within Parks and Rec have actually been through the race and equity training that a number of our city employees have gone through, so that when we talk about really applying the equity piece, that we actually have people that understand how to do that? So I'm not sure which of the two of you might be able to sort of give us a...
If you could come up to the microphone to answer, because everybody watching can't hear you.
Sorry to put you on the spot, Doty.
That's okay. I don't have that answer, but we could certainly get that for you.
Okay, I think that would be helpful to know, so that as we move the plan forward, we have a clear understanding of how many of our, especially the upper management people who will be sent in the direction and moving the projects forward, understand the impact to the adjacent neighborhoods, the importance of including them in the conversation, you know, all of that that is covered in the training that is done.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Could you introduce yourself for the people watching?
Sure. Doty Erickson, Denver Parks and Recreation, Special Projects Director.
Thank you very much.
And sorry to put you on the spot again.
Anything else, Councilwoman?
That's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Cashman.
Yeah, Kathleen. When we passed Blueprint and the comp plan, we passed an amendment that included a paragraph saying that policies and processes should be designed to reduce Denver's carbon footprint, to eliminate our contribution to the climate crisis. Staff assured me it would be added to this plan as well. Can you confirm that it has been?
Yes, that is part of the final plan.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Cashman. Seeing no other questions, the public hearing for Council Bill 424 is closed. Comments by members of council. Councilwoman Ortega.
Thank you, Mr. President. I first want to thank Jack Patterson from my office, who sat in on meetings that I was not able to attend. I want to thank our two co-chairs, Florence Navarro and Darryl Watson, as well as our city staff, our team of staff people who were at all of our meetings, Doty, Yolanda. I don't know why I'm forgetting your first name. But we had an incredible amount of people who stuck through the process for the full three-year timeframe, that came and gave their input, that were in attendance at many of the public meetings to, you know, just kind of ensure that not only the word was getting out, but that people were actually showing up to the public hearings across the city. And, you know, I think the recommendations that are in the plan clearly reflect that broad input. And there were a lot of low-income people from neighborhoods across the city. It was not, you know, something that just targeted certain neighborhoods to get people out. We were all utilizing social media to share with the public, to encourage them to come to the meetings and give their input about what they wanted to see in this game plan document. And the document actually reflects that input. So I just want to say hats off to everyone who was involved in helping to move this forward and to reflect that genuine input from the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ortega. Councilman Lopez.
I wanted to thank all of you for your hard work. To see this actually be actualized, and when we talk about equity, and we talk about a healthy city, and looking at the entire city when we're talking about that, that's that's what gives me some confidence that this is going to actually have, be a plan that doesn't just sit on the shelf, right? That actually has legs. That's usually me, by the way, so, with a different song, right, Elvis? So I, you know, I'm very happy about it. Hopefully, the plan can be amended to include the Westwood Rec Center and its utilization and how we go about, you know, programming. The work that's been done on the west side and just connecting it to the park system and parks' attention to the west side has been amazing in the last, in the last 12 years, right? And I thank every single one of you for believing in that vision and for really working to achieve that, right? You both have been working so hard out there, so I really appreciate that. Leslie, Darryl, everybody. You know, I just, my hats off to you. Prab is, Prab is a non-paid board. It's completely volunteer, right? It's completely volunteer. You catch a lot of hell. And you have something that's so precious to us as residents of Denver, and that's our parks, our park systems, our recreational facilities. They are amazing. So hats off to you. Thank you. Thank you all for bringing this up. I'm sorry, Mr. President. It's like, I'm almost saying, it's like I'm saying bye every time. I just, I'm just happy to see this come forward and pass, so.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Lopez. I think you broke some hearts when you announced that Prab was not paid. I think we have a few people who have put in decades of work hoping a paycheck was coming at some point. Councilman Brooks.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank everybody for being a part of such an important process and really shaping our future in the city of Denver and shaping our future for progress. You know, all the, all the major players in northeast Denver are in the room speaking with Joel Noble and Darryl Watson and Leslie Torogowski and Andy. And so I've got to vote for this. No, I'm just joking. But, you know, I think about District Nine. I think about what the Parks Department has done in District Nine. And every park in District Nine has been redone. And because of that, there is revitalization and connectivity. And for, you know, one of our folks up here was saying, if people can't connect to the parks, you know, what good is it? You know, it's not diverse. I challenge anyone in this room to come and see our parks in District Nine. There's some of the most diverse, vibrant parks in the city. You're going to get backyard barbecues. You're going to get quinceañeras. You're going to get all kinds of stuff because it is about the inclusivity. And that's what I love about our park system, is everyone matters and everyone makes a difference. And so thank everyone for being a part of this. You're really changing the perspective of what we look like as a city. And so I just want to thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Brooks. I will just add my thank yous to staff, to our task force members. I mean, look at, look at this back row here and the number of decades of service and dedication to this cause. What a great process. It was awesome to be a part of the task force and work with all of you and the broad community. I mean, we had, some of those meetings were, you know, there were 40 stakeholders, and it was, it really was all the people who've been working on parks and in parks and on these issues for so long. And to see, you know, the final draft of this coming forward and know not only can we adopt this, and not only is this aspirational, but now we're going to start implementing, and we have the money to do that. So this is an implementable plan that is going to shape parks right away. And so it's so exciting. So thank you all for all of your time, for your effort, for taking time to be here and speak once again about the importance of this. We are lucky to have all of you. And with that, let's vote. Madam Secretary, roll call.
Black?
Aye.
Brooks?
Aye.
Espinoza?
Aye.
Flynn?
Aye.
Gilmore?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Lopez?
Aye.
Newt?
Aye.
Ortega?
Aye.
Sussman? Mr. President?
Aye. Madam Secretary, please close the voting and announce the results.
10 ayes.
10 ayes. Council Bill 424 has passed.